Oh, we have form, that's for sure. Okay, great. Um, so I recommend that minutes pertaining to job performance, character, physical, mental health of a person or persons superintendent search update remain sealed.
Second.
Uh, I need somebody to move that.
Okay.
Don't move.
Yeah, second.
Thank you. Moved in seconds. Who gave the second?
Catherine.
Thank you. So Craig and Catherine, uh, those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Any recusals? Okay. This brings us to disclosure of executive session votes. Mr. Luzon.
Thank you very much. Uh, just to say on vote five, Linda, I didn't hear you, but I assumed you voted ye- yay. So that's what I wrote you down as. If you didn't, please say so. Linda Laiol.
No, that's fine. Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, Craig.
That's all right. Uh, we had five votes in executive session. The first vote was the exec- um, approving the executive session minutes of April fourteenth, twenty twenty, superintendent search update. It was ten in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, zero recusals. In favor, Abbott, Callahan, Chambers, Day, Juisty, Johnson, Luzon, McCaruso, McAllister, and Stall abstaining Dimoff. Second vote was concerning approving executive session minutes of April fourteenth, twenty twenty, NEA ESP contract negotiation update. Ten in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, zero recusals. In favor, Abbott, Callahan, Chambers, Day, Juisty, Johnson, Luzon, McCaruso, McAllister, and Stall abstaining Dimoff. Third vote was executive session minutes of April fourteenth, twenty twenty, transportation contract. Ten in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, zero recusals. In favor, Abbott, Callahan, Chambers, Day, Juisty, Johnson, Luzon, McCaruso, McAllister, and Stall abstaining Dimoff. Uh, fourth vote, executive session minutes of April fourteenth, twenty twenty, home instruction requests. Ten in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, zero recusals. In favor, Abbott, Callahan, Chambers, Day, Juisty, Johnson, Luzon, McCaruso, McAllister, and Stall abstaining Dimoff. Uh, fifth vote was returning to regular session. Twelve in favor, zero opposed, zero abstention, zero accusers- recusals. In favor, Abbott, Callahan, Chambers, Day, Dimoff, Juisty, Johnson, Luzon, Laiol, McCaruso, McAllister, and Stall. It's all yours, Chair.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, folks, uh, just a little housekeeping item. Um, with Zoom, at the bottom of the the screen, there's a participants list. As you click on that, it'll give you the list of participants that are in this meeting. At the bottom of that list, there's a little button that says or reads raise hand. Um, if any time you want to be recognized, um, go ahead and hit that button and I will, I will call you in order. Uh, committee will, members will be given preference. Um, there's no anonymity here, so you will be asked to give your name and town you reside in. With that being said, I'd like to open it up to public forum. Does anybody, uh, on the call like, uh, to say something that is not related to an agenda item?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Bill Day, I, uh, I can't, uh, I don't know, I'm doing something wrong here, but can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Uh, on the public forum, I, I noticed Sal Elgery, uh, is, uh, on, on the, uh, telecast or broadcast, whatever we call it, and, uh, he's retiring from this district and, uh, been a, a great asset to this district over the years, uh, as a, a teacher, uh, dean of students. But the one thing that, uh, really, uh, I want to, uh, put out there is that, uh, he was someone I worked with very closely along with other public service personnel in the district to, uh, to, to highlight and, uh, head up our school safety issues. And, and I, I don't know where we're ever going to be able to find another individual that would put as much time into school safety district wise that, that Sal has. And, uh, we're really going to miss him. And, uh, I hope that, uh, he has a good, uh, long retirement and maybe he can get rid of some of them fancy dress clothes that he's got and donate them to somebody that really could use them now. And, uh, good luck, Sal.
And thank you, Sal. Appreciate it.
Well, I want to thank all of you for, for the kind words and I enjoyed working with each and every one of you. And I'll still be, um, working with some of you until June thirtieth. So I appreciate all the accolades, but there's a lot of great people and, uh, the people in the school make you want to do your best. And that's why you give your best because it's a great community.
Thank you, sir. Well said. Uh, anyone else? Public forum, Donna Chambers, I see you put your hand up.
Yes. Uh, okay, uh, most of us are aware of, um, the concerns that the public and our elected officials and our town officials have about not having a graduation ceremony. And I feel it's, it's the highlight of my year and I totally agree. It's super sad that we cannot have a graduation ceremony and these kids are losing out. However, I really appreciate Jane's response to that because I totally agree and support that we cannot have a big public event. What however, people, um, create an atmosphere that is similar to what we would be doing, but in our cars, either a drive-in or a tent with chairs apart, we cannot assure the safety of anyone participating in any kind of event like that. So I would like to support Jane in her, in her decisions on that and to be sure that, that I, at least as a committee, I myself as a committee member am, um, feeling that it would be irresponsible of us to have any form of ceremony as much as this, these kids would miss it.
Yeah.
I think we should not have any kind of a public ceremony in any way. And it was irresponsible in some ways for the person on our, um, town council to go forward with that without having approve, approval from the town council or permission to use Nittogurt Park. Um, in any event, I think that, that, that was unfair and I support Jane's decision to stay firm on no graduation ceremony, as sad as that is for our children. Yeah.
Hey, thank you, Donna. I, I do want to say that, um, um, thank you for making the point. It's not on the agenda, but there is also an opportunity down at the bottom, um, for any committee members to make it an agenda item as well if, uh, if we need to take this up. And I know that there's a lot moving in the background on that, so we might want to.
I, um, I would not, I would not put it on the agenda because I think the decisions are not, are beyond the people that are putting the pressure on. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, with that, I'm going to, uh, close public forum, um, and move us on to business. Jane, if you would address that.
Sure. The first item is to, uh, recommend approval of the revised two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school calendar. Um, this calendar incorporates dates that were presented by the state with the new state calendar. And the big changes are that May sixth, May twentieth, and June first will be professional development days for staff. Students will not have distance learning on those days. And in addition to that, May fifteenth, um, will be a vacation day. So students and staff will not, uh, need to have, be involved in distance learning on that day. It still, um, has our last day of school being June seventeenth. So there's no change with that date. And the last date for seniors, instructional day for seniors is still May twenty ninth. So those dates have not changed.
Still moved.
Second.
Do we still have Ryan? I don't know. We might have lost him.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Need to call discussion.
Okay. Thank you. So, uh, we have a motion and a second. Uh, this is open for discussion. Lisa.
Um, so a few parents have, um, reached out asking, um, if there's any consideration um, to end the school year early, um, now that decision's made to not return to school. Um, so I was wondering if there's any conversations happening on that. And then other parents, um, have actually reached out to ask whether or not there will be any summer preparation days to help students, um, to better prepare for incoming, uh, incoming curriculum, especially students that are transitioning from elementary to middle or middle to high.
Um.
Thank you. Jane.
Those are great questions. Um, on the first part, in terms of, uh, would we end the school year earlier? Um, I have been in conversations with that, um, with the state. And I think the feeling is that they're asking us to adopt the state calendar, that they're already putting in four days, um, where students will not be involved in distance learning so that there are, um, really multiple four-week days and shorter, shorter weeks for students. So they, um, would like us to honor the last day of school. But I know that at each of our schools, I've been working with the principals and we're already planning, um, best ways to end the school year. Um, and so as it, June has been planned in the past, we'll make sure that there are some fun activities for students online, um, in June to, so that it's not going to be, you know, homework and tests up till the last day. But we will, we will try to make sure we close out the school year on a positive note. And your second question, we haven't discussed that yet. I think that's something we'll definitely need to talk about as we start thinking and planning for how to reopen in September. So that, thank you for that thought. It's something that we'll definitely keep in mind. Um, at the next meeting, we will also be talking about our plans for extended school year for our students with, um, disabilities. And we also have, um, another summer program for elementary school students in reading. So those we will have still this year, but they will be, the plan is to have them virtual.
Thank you. Any further discussion? No? Okay, then we have a motion and a second to adopt the revised school calendar. Those in favor, a motion? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Recusal? Fantastic. It's unanimous. Thank you. Brings us to business. Let it be.
All right, I'm going to put the grading protocol up on the screen. Just give me one second. Principals will, uh, appreciate this because when we have our Zoom meetings regularly, I always struggle with, uh, sharing the screen. It always takes me a moment. Okay. All right. So, um, we've been working for the past few weeks, planning for what we were going to do in terms of grading for the end of the school year. And this is specifically to decide what we're going to do for the fourth quarter for middle school and high school and ca- and secondary students and the third trimester for the elementary school and, school students and the end of year. So as we've talked about this, um, one of the things that we talked about with the principals is just that we have had a history of high expectations for students academic and social emotional learning. And we really feel that students have risen to meet those expectations even as we've gone forward with distance learning. Um, for the past six years, we have provided resources for our staff and our students to really prepare us for quality learning experiences through distance learning. Um, you know, we recognize that the administrators, the staff, the faculty, students, and parents, they're all doing their best to make the most of the challenging circumstances that, you know, have been mandated. Um, and that said, we do acknowledge that everyone's experience is not the same. So with this pandemic, um, you know, we, there was just a conversation with principals earlier and, you know, many students are doing wonderful. And, you know, they are doing their lessons, they are exercising in the middle of the day, um, they are going right back to it and they're, they're really thriving. Whereas there's other students where it's more challenging. So we really do understand and empathize that it can be difficult for some and for others, it's working out well. Um, we encourage our students and parents to continue to reach out to our teachers and our staff with any concerns or difficulties that they're having as they move through distance learning. And we're asking our teachers to be flexible and consider equity in the students' experiences and focus on mastery of learning. Uh, we believe it's important to support and assess with empathy, elicit feedback from all the school community members continuously, and then adjust our services accordingly. So with all of that being said, we considered all of that before we are going to make the recommendations that are before you. And, um, this evening I have Sharon Martin is on the call and she's going to present the protocol for elementary school for grades K to four.
Hi, everyone. So nice to see you from a distance supporting our work. For kindergarten through fourth grade, we, um, have proposed making changes to our current standards-based scoring model. Typically, our report card is scored on a scale of one to five. We are proposing that we, um, change the scale to be, uh, performance levels three, four, and five, noting that our traditional levels one and two will be captured in levels, um, three. So, um, just to kind of give you a little background into our elementary progress report that we send out three times a year, that report card levels one is just beginning, does not grasp the concepts. And level two is making some progress towards the standards. So we propose, um, Jane, if you can scroll down just a little bit, um, we propose, um, adding both of those concepts to a scoring level three. Scoring level four, based on previous student's performance and new, new information gained during distance learning, the student consistently meets a standard. And a score of a level five, based on student performance and new information gained during distance learning, the student consistently exceeds the standard. Why we are, um, proposing making a change to grading, there's really two reasons. The first is that, as you know, at the elementary level, our students have really only just begun in the last three years to have access to a device in the classroom for instruction. And they have a device at a, one device for every two students ratio. So certainly they have, um, quite a bit of experience using technology in the classroom, but it's only to complement the instruction from the classroom teacher. Um, so that's one reason. And then the other is that, um, as you probably know, our kindergarten, our kindergarten and first grade students are completing most of their assignments on paper. And when the assignments are done on paper, they're either being uploaded, um, with a photograph of the assignment to the teacher, or they're being returned to the school a week later on the day of the next packet pickup. So the students are not getting that immediate feedback in kindergarten and first grade, um, like they would if they were in the physical classroom with their teacher.
Thank you. For, um, the middle school, we have Greg Zenyon.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Should we ask questions if we have a question after a principal?
Yeah, actually, I was gonna jump in and say that. So, uh, again, uh, hit the raised hand button if you can, because I can't see everybody's picture. Um, or just, uh, if we, I don't want to get too hectic, but, um, because we just touched on the kindergarten section, uh, the K through four section, uh, are there any questions related to this section, uh, from Sharon?
Yes, I, I have some questions.
You're at.
I think Craig was first.
Okay, well, uh, let's go Murat and then Craig. Yep.
Um, I, I just wanted to ask, uh, Sharon, i- is this, and I, uh, is this, is this change for distant learning only grading policy?
Yes, just for distance learning because of some of the, um, some of the barriers that we face that, um, some of which I shared with you and others being mindful of, um, the challenges of teaching from a distance. So.
I, I understand. I just wanted to make sure that this is not a change across the board for.
Absolutely not. This is just for distance learning for trimester three.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thanks, Karen. Uh, Mr. Luzon?
Yeah, I, um, K and one, could you just give us a little bit of history? You did imply they don't have a whole lot of experience with the, uh, technology. Can you give us a experience, uh, some history on that first?
Sure. So, um, about three years ago, we began rolling out Chromebooks to our older students in grades two, three, and four at a two to one ratio. The following year, we rolled out iPads to kindergarten and first grade students. And kindergarten and first grade students have been using iPads in Charahoe for the last two years to complement instruction. So what does that look like? It might mean when you're in, um, a reader workshop, you might see the children broken into three smaller groups. One group is where the teacher's providing direct instruction to students. Another group might be a teaching assistant working with a small group of students. And the third group might be a group of students working on an iPad. And they're working on skills, reinforcing skills, um, that they're working on in the classroom. The challenge at K and one has always been for us that our kindergarten and first grade students don't have their own Google accounts. So the kindergarten and first grade teachers have not been able to capture a lot of assessment data from when students are using those iPads. They're typically used to reinforce learning. Um, because distance learning has provided us the opportunity to give kids access to free technology like Dreambox for math or Raz Kids for reading. Those are options for kindergarten and first grade, but there is no expectation that our kindergarten and first grade students use those digital platforms during distance learning because our virtual instruction plan calls for a primarily paper-based instructional program for them.
Well, thank you very much. I, yes, I'm all aware of this. I, I just want others to hear, uh, you explain that. I was looking at this scoring and by re, by eliminating one and two, let's, let's, i- in a hypothetical situation, uh, you, you have an evenly dis- uh, distributed class, uh, twenty kids, four kids in each group, uh, one, four and ones, four twos, four threes, so on and so forth. Now all of a sudden, you have twelve threes. Going forward, is there going to be any impact to, let's say, the hypothetical little Timmy who was a one who needed help? They knew in, in the first trimester, he, he needed help. Second trimester, he needed help. All of a sudden, in trimester three, he's now a three. So next year, assuming we start school in September, what's going to happen to little Timmy?
So hopefully little Timmy has already been identified by the school much earlier in the year based on your story of him. So I suppose Timmy has already had intensive RTI supports and that continued in the physical building and then has continued in distance learning. And I can't speak for the other buildings, but we're all pretty much on the same page where our readings and math specialists have been meeting virtually with those kids who are struggling almost every day. And ironically, many of those children are really responding quite well to having that intensive one-on-one support through Google Meet. It's not to say that that child may be meeting standard. It's not to say that when we return to school in September, that child will be where we hoped they would be. So our plan is that when we return to school in September, we do our initial assessments on Timmy and everyone else in Timmy's class and determine where Timmy needs some additional instruction and provide that instruction in the classroom for him.
I, I just don't, and, and we deviated from what the state was implying. So they wanted to, they recommended doing a credit or no credit. Would it be ideal, at least for kindergarten and first grade, to at least do that? Could somebody answer that?
Jane's hand is raised.
Jane.
Sorry. Um, yes. Um, so what they, what they did say is that, um, you know, student learnings should still be recorded at the standard level and reviewed, reviewed frequently by teachers. And by change, going to a three, four, or five, I feel like in essentially we are doing that. A three means that they haven't met it yet. Um, a four means they've met it. So that is the pass, fail, credit, no credit approach. And we're just also allowing for a five because we do have some students that already exceeded the standards. Uh, remember, when we grade on those standards, they are mastery by the end of the year. And it's potential, potentially possible that a student already exceeded the standard at the end of second trimester. So we wouldn't want to take away that opportunity to earn, to have the five. But essentially, the way, if you look at the descriptions we put in, I, I feel that by essentially putting the three and four, we are, we are saying that. But we're just allowing for also exceeding the standard.
Well, well, personally, I think, um, because of the circumstances, I, I understand that districts are really kind of in, um, a lot of gray area right now. But I think our little Timmies who were ones, I, I'm just concerned come September. I, I, I really am. I, I'm, so I just want to make that comment.
Well, Craig, I think we all agree that for the students who are disengaged or who are struggling, not being in physical, you know, that physical closeness with their teacher, those are the kids we worry about the most. And I spoke to a teacher the other day. He said, oh, it's so hard to be fifty miles away from this child. You just, you want to be in the same room with them because there's just something magical about that teacher-student relationship. And it's very hard to, it's hard to replicate that in a distance learning environment.
Well, I only have one last comment and that's, you know, this may be six or eight months of their life, but that's one tenth of their life. So I'm just, just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Craig. Um, uh, Kim St. Clair, let's see your hand up.
Yes. So, um, Kim St. Clair, I live in Hopkinton and I teach fourth grade at Hope Valley. And I want to echo Mr. Luzon's concerns, um, because I have the same concern for those little Timmies who are getting ones or twos, and now all of a sudden they're getting a three. And according to the description that says they do not consistently, um, meet standard, that kind of, to me, implies that they are meeting standard sometimes, but not all the times. And in some situations, they're just not meeting the standard, even with the one-on-one and the support, the RTIs, the, all the individual Google meets, it's more difficult for them to learn, say through technology, than it would be in person with manipulatives and, um, other types of experiences. So I'm concerned with students that were getting those ones and twos, now all of a sudden they're a three, and it implies that they were getting some, uh, mastering some of the standard at some point. In one of our scores in math, um, geometry, it's only scored in the last trimester. And I know that if, that kids love geometry, but it's going to be a lot harder to get them to show the geometry, um, because a lot, the standard talks about having them draw certain things. So yes, we'll have them draw and probably upload photographs and that kind of thing. But to say that they've truly mastered it and I can continuously, um, help them and work with them, I, I don't want to give parents false hope, not false hope, um, a false sense of, um, progress that their child has made. Um, I think every teacher's being understanding in the drawbacks that they might have at home, uh, what their home situation is like, um, whether they're having technology issues or not, or, you know, everybody's got a unique situation. But my concern is those students who are not showing up for meetings, they're not doing their work, we're reaching out to them. Um, the kids that have those interventions, they're meeting with reading specialists, they're meeting with math specialists, and yet they're still struggling. And to me, a three doesn't accurately show, um, where they fall on the, the standards progress.
Understood. Thank you for sharing. For the rest of the committee, any further discussion or anyone in general for any further discussion on the? for any further discussion on the kindergarten section? I think you've signed kindergarten and elementary school section. You're at.
Well, I listened with a particular interest, all the questions, obviously. I do have a vested interest in grading policies for the elementary school because my daughter is in there under Sharon's command, and thank you, she's doing well. But I do understand, and that's why I, I do understand the concerns and the reason and I do share these concerns as well. That's why I asked Sharon if this is a temporarily change for just the distant learning grading policy. I do not expect that it will last long. Hopefully, in the, in the, in the fall, we'll go back to normal schooling. And then the regular, like, one to five grade will be back for actual classroom medication and evaluation that comes with it. And I wish there was a better solution, but given the circumstances where I know a lot of families are struggling with one or especially if it's more than one elementary-age kid at home, it's a nightmare. So I do intend to vote for this change with understanding that this is just a distant learning grading policy change that will hopefully expire by itself when we go back to school in September.
Thank you, Marat. Okay. I'd like to progress to the middle school section.
Okay. Next, we have Mr. Zenyan. He's going to present the middle school section.
Good evening, everyone. So we are looking to make some changes to the, um, how we grade in the fourth quarter, or as long as we stay virtual. Hopefully, it will only be for the fourth quarter. But, um, we're looking for right now not to have any major assessments or any QCAs in the fourth, in the fourth quarter. Um, we believe that, um, we're just not sure how we would administrate them fairly. And, um, it just doesn't seem remotely like, um, giving those tests would, would work. So we would like to, um, we would like to get rid of our categories too. Right now, um, we're broken up to major assessments, which count for 65% of our grade and, um, minor assessments, which are short assignments that count for 35%. We would like to go to one grade, just have one category, and we want to call that virtual learning. And that would include quizzes, reviews, warm-ups, any kind of, um, work that's done virtually, um, shortest, and short assignments to show that, um, short assessments to show that they're learning. So we wouldn't, um, do like a, um, a unit test. We would break a unit test maybe down into three quizzes and just give them more, more assessments with less work to, less material being covered to see how they're doing. We would, um, average all these scores together. So, um, for example, right now, QCAs count for 15% or 20% of the grade, depending on which grade. Homework right now can count for no more than 10%. We would, um, everything would just become an average, almost like, um, the old-school grading when you only had one category and all the grades went in and you averaged it up and that was your grade. Because, um, to give more weight to a certain area right now doesn't seem, um, virtually like that would work. And then, um, we would accept late work throughout the quarter because, um, we know there are different circumstances mattering on, um, home life and everything. We know we have, um, parents that are working. We know we have kids that, um, their whole schedules are being uplifted. We know they're being moved from place to place. Some are being dragged on and off job sites, so they can't get on all day. So they're doing the work later at night or the next day. So we want to get rid of, um, the late work. And then, um, we would still be putting in the M for missing work so that there's that space holder. Um, some teachers put in the M and the zero, so it puts in the average. So parents are aware what the grade will be if the work's not done. And then, um, lastly, we would like to not have learner qualities in the fourth quarter because, um, learner qualities, although we feel we're off to a good start with them, this is the middle school's first year of doing learner qualities. And we have, um, we've only done them once because we do them at the end of second quarter and then we would do them again at the end of fourth quarter. And we already realized if we were to use learner qualities virtually, we would have to change the rubric and what they looked like. And that would be very confusing, we believe, to, um, students and staff because we've only done them once. So that, um, if we have been doing learner qualities for a couple of years, I think maybe we could say, you know, we could grade them virtually and change up the rubric a little bit. But to have such little experience with that rubric with our students, to then change it on them, we just don't think it would, um, we don't think it's worth it. We will still emphasize the learner qualities and what can be done virtually. We just, um, at this point, don't feel it would be productive to grade it. That's, um, pretty much it in a pretty quick version. Um, you do have the full document.
Yep.
I'm sure there'll be some questions, but thank you.
Yeah. Now, thank you. Appreciate the, uh, the overview. I do have Catherine. Do you have a question for Mr. Zenyan?
I do. I think it's more of a comment. Um, Mr. Zenyan and I emailed about this a little bit yesterday. And my, my first reaction was that I wasn't comfortable with the fourth quarter counting for 25% still of the year grade because I think, um, it almost acts like everything is, is equal. And I don't think that virtual learning is at all equal to classroom learning. But his point, which was well-made, was it's not necessarily fair to start changing the weight of the other quarters either. So I think you've done the best with a difficult situation. You know, I have two kids in the middle school and one at the high school. And so I've seen how three very different learners are doing with, with distance learning and they're all dealing with it very differently, honestly. So I think this policy takes some of that into account. And I like the comments from the administrators and teachers who have spoken already, understanding that this isn't normal. This isn't, hopefully, what we continue to do next year. And I think we just need to be consistently mindful of that, that this isn't normal and recognizing that we have students in very different circumstances. It'll be interesting to see the outcome of this next year.
Thanks, Lisa. Uh, Catherine, sorry. Lisa's up next.
Um, so Ryan, I want to ask, um, if you could have Mr. Zenyan elaborate a little bit on how, um, the grading and the students' kind of, um, their development, right, and their acquisition of skills in the eighth grade that are going into high school will be communicated to the high school teachers. I had mentioned earlier that several parents have, to me, specifically concerned about their transitioning eighth graders, right? So the thought being that, well, those in fifth grade or sixth grade or seventh, they loop with their teachers. Their teachers will know where they, what they missed. They'll, they'll know what they were teaching. They'll know what areas to emphasize. But how will that be communicated for eighth graders going into ninth grade? So that, one, that they're, um, they're, they're learned, they're met where they are. We get them up to speed, but also that their, like, wellness and their anxiety about going into high school, um, not feeling prepared, will be addressed as well.
Thank you, Lisa. Mr. Zenyan.
Yes, Lisa, that's a great question. Um, so, um, I think our content leaders are going to have to, um, you know, meet and talk with the department heads at the high school. And they're going to have to, um, you know, give a basic breakdown of, um, what was covered per class versus, um, you know, some of the, the gaps that may be there. I think what we are trying very hard to do is, um, cover the, the major standards through, you know, the, the core information so that they don't go to high school with as many gaps as you would think. So, um, maybe their writing isn't as strong as it would have been, but their writing is, is in a place where they will be able to handle the freshman load. Um, I think the two areas where you have to look really closely would be math and, um, foreign language because they build so much on each other. Um, I've already had in-depth conversations with John Lab about science and he does not feel that, um, eighth grade will have the deficiencies that, um, you know, could be there because some of the, um, stuff in fourth quarter, they've, um, they've just looked at it differently. So they're, they're going to cover it. They just, um, some of the, um, activities that, um, the hands-on stuff that would be more fun and, um, that, you know, unfortunately, kids look forward to for the end of the year just won't happen. But that will give them the time to work on some of the other skills to make sure they're where they're at. Um, math, I have been talking, um, in detail with Chris Barvin, who's our content leader. And, um, we are trying to see if kids are starting to slip. We, we do have our math specialists working with, um, our kids that, um, were, um, identified before we went out and who now may be identified as, um, struggling. And then I think we're going to have to try to identify kids that, um, did really well until we went virtually and then, you know, they've slipped. Um, I did two home visits yesterday and one of the students, um, had very good grades until we went virtually. Now that student is struggling. Um, how much of that is emotional or so, you know, just not being around their peers, not having that interaction with their teacher? And how far behind will that child fall because, um, you know, they're just not doing as well virtually? I, I think, um, because we are one-to-one and I think all our classrooms, were Google classrooms before this, I think a lot of the foundation that they need to go to high school they're going to get, I would just, um, we're going to have to keep a closer eye, I would say, on math than our, um, French and Spanish kids.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. McKenzie.
I was just going to piggyback on what Greg said. We had a good discussion in our department head meeting earlier in the week about really focusing some of our, what we typically do in vertical articulation, specifically on eighth and ninth grade, particularly in the core. And I think some of the ninth-grade redesign work that was really primary in our XQ grant and, and really a big part of our vision for the school, especially in terms of some teaming design and academic and social emotional supports that are really supporting, um, not letting kids in any circumstance slip through the cracks just because of the connectedness through CPT that, that some of those supports are, are going to be really helpful as we transition into the school year in the fall. Beyond that, even our peer mentoring program, where we're looking at targeting our National Honor Society kids who are just inducted or in the process of being inducted right now, training them in peer mentoring and doing what we can virtually to try to connect some of our strong upperclassmen to our at-risk incoming ninth graders. And I think one of the values of virtue is, of virtual learning is that it provides the opportunity for us to not only connect students from the high school to kids who are coming from CMS, but also the 20% of our students who come from sending districts as well and trying to connect with them over the course of the summer as we wait and see what we can do for our new student orientation at the end of the summer going into the school year.
Right. Thanks, sir. Uh, Bill Day.
Yes, um, I had a couple of, uh, children who went to the school district when it wasn't considered one of the high-performance school districts and, and they'd done all right for themselves. I think what a lot of parents now are forgetting today is their children are a lot more resourceful than, than they want to give them credit for. And if they support them and continue to encourage them, uh, they're going to get through this. And, uh, kids, uh, kids bounce back a lot quicker and a lot stronger than a lot of parents want to give them credit for. Even they bounce back quicker than some of their parents. So, so I, I think that we're, we're on the right track. I'm not a great knowledgeable, uh, person about computers and stuff like that. But, uh, you know, I think that they're going to, they're going to get there and, and give them a chance and support them and encourage them and, and it will be, we'll be fine.
Thanks, Bill. Okay. Uh, any further questions on the middle school section?
Chair.
Yes, sir. Mr. Luzon.
Greg, did you imply, or did I hear you right, that on the report card is going to be a connotation for the fourth quarter? Or there's going to be a connotation of virtual learning?
We're gonna, um, Craig, that's a good question. I don't know if it's going to show up on the report card, but in Power School, um, we have our, our, um, grade broken up into major assignments, which are the 65%, and then they're called minor assignments or the, the short assignments, which are 35%. So in Power Teacher, there's two separate categories. That doesn't show up on the report card, but when the teachers are entering that information. So we're looking for a fourth quarter to dissolve those two and make it into one. And we would like to tie it to virtual learning. But I don't think that will show on the report card. So I don't know if, um, in comments, if you would like us to put a note saying fourth quarter was done virtually?
I think for the kids' records for, it probably would be a prudent idea for all grades to at least connotate virtual learning.
I agree.
So should I make that as a motion, Chair?
Uh, actually, um, let me ask, this question is, I saw, I see Jane's hand up. So before I ask my question, Jane, do you have a comment, please?
Yeah, I think, yeah. Um, I, we'll definitely do that as long as we can in Power School. Um, that might be our only limitation. However, certainly, we will make sure that, like, for elementary school and we send home those report cards, they get a paper report card. So we will have a description of what the three, four, and five is and that'll be sent home with the report cards. And we'll make sure that also is in the student file. And I would say the same for middle school and high school. We'll send, I know the principals will send information home to families about how we're going to do grades a little bit differently, so they'll all be informed. But in terms of just memorializing it on, in the system, that's something I just have to consult with Sean Cole on to make sure we were able to do that.
Well, well, my concern isn't necessarily in relationship to this discussion. Is it necessarily right now, but when, when a future employer looks at a student's transcript?
Sure.
I mean, it wouldn't hurt to at least connotate that during this timeframe, this may have impacted or may, you know, just something to at least show. Not that people are going to forget what's going on, but they may not correlate at that time.
No, I agree. I just not, I can't guarantee how we'll do it tonight until I kind of work with Sean Cole on that. But I, I definitely agree that that will be important.
Thank you.
Excellent. So it'll be added if possible. If not, we'll hear a report back online. Any further questions on the middle school section?
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zenyan. All right, folks, let's move to the high school.
Okay. Um, for the high school, we have Mr. McKenzie and Ms. Spaz and Mr. Oss.
Hey, I just want to really quickly start by thanking the committee for convening on such short notice. Uh, there's a timeliness related to your review of this, given the fact that we already are jumping into fourth quarter. And I really appreciate you all taking the time to give our work on thinking about how we can best support students going into fourth quarter, a careful look. Um, again, I think, as you've heard at every other level, we're really thinking about the students, trying to honor them and at the same time, um, come up with a system that sets them up for success as they move into their post-secondary goals. And without a lot of structured, um, direction from post-secondary institutions, we want to make sure that, that Charahoe students have as many choices when they graduate as possible. And I think, um, we were very primed, as, as primed as any school in the state or even in the region to go to distance learning because of our seven years working in one-to-one and the development of our learner management system canvas. But I'm going to have Andrea take you on a walk through our specifics in the proposal. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Hi, everyone. It's good to see you all virtually. Just wanted to take you through two sections here. One is on grading practices and the other is on assessment. So, uh, like Mr. McKenzie was saying, we feel, um, pretty strong in the fact that we can continue with our current grading practices as they stand in terms of the numerical grade and, and the fact that we are a well-equipped high school and our faculty and students are ready to continue with our grading practices as they stand. Uh, what we would like to see is the weighting for our semester two grades to maintain as follows. This is currently how it is written in policy. Quarter three would be weighted at 40%, quarter four at 40%, and major course assessments at 20%. The areas where we are looking to do some modification and to show some flexibility for our learners is with the fourth quarter weighting. So we're looking to weight our, um, minor, um, activities, products, um, assignments as, counting as 50% of the final grade. And we're also looking to have our major assignments, assessments weighted at 20%. And we're also looking to have our major assignments assessments weighted at 50% of the grade. Formally, it was major assessments and assignments counted as no less than 65%. So this is a change in that we're looking to go 50-50, and that provides some flexibility to our students. So there'll be less of a significant weighting impact on major assignments and major products. In terms of our assessment practices, we currently, as you know, do semester exams or also known as major course assessments. We do those at the end of each semester. We are not going to be administering our MCAs that we currently have in file. What we do want to do is adopt, adapt our MCAs to fit more of this virtual learning environment, and we are going to task our educators to creating alternative MCAs, which will likely be a summative assessment, maybe a performance task, maybe something that's a little bit more project-based. But what we're really looking for here is that we are capturing those essential power standards that are taught throughout the course of the semester. So whatever instruction does take place, that's what we plan to assess. We're not going to do anything beyond only what is instructed throughout this semester. What we're also looking to do is be able to waive the must-pass expectation. So this is another area where we're showing a little bit more flexibility. So we're going to waive the must-pass expectation for classes that are graduation requirements. So as long as students have a semester final average that's 70 or above, they're not required to pass that alternative MCA. And then finally, for students who do fail their MCA, but they have a passing grade for the semester prior to the exam, they do have the opportunity to do a retake to improve their grade. And that's it.
Thank you. Open for questions, comments? You can't let her off that easy.
Yes, you can.
One really quick.
Yes, sir. David and then Craig.
Yep, so they have the opportunity to retake those, but they don't have to.
Correct. That's a student decision.
So, and they don't, because it's not required to pass, it's simply if they want to bring that grade up.
Correct. Yep.
Thanks.
Craig.
Well, this was the rebuttal, your comment, Ryan, but since David asked a question, she got asked a question. Good job, Andrea.
Thanks, Craig.
Donna. Donna, you're muted.
Hi, good to see you all. I just, this is terrific. I think this is what we've been working toward, this whole business of alternative assessments in different ways that students can show evidence of what they've learned, and I think you've done a great job of this. I'm not sure if I understand why you're waiving the must-pass when it's a graduation requirement. I don't understand that.
I think, given the circumstances, Donna, surrounding the instruction that we're providing, if the student has worked through both quarters and with their semester exam included, and they have a passing grade of 70 or above, the challenges of providing remediation and retaking of the exam and really just giving the students the benefit of the doubt, given that they earned a passing grade despite not passing the exam is something, we understand that that's a cornerstone of our diploma system, the MCAs are, but in these particular circumstances, we wanted to offer that grace to the students.
Well, I think that's good. I think that's good. I don't think, under the circumstances, that we should be penalizing students for not being able to meet all the requirements and move on with their life. But I also, wait a minute, I had a thought, I'm losing it. But if the student has an opportunity to do an alternative MCA and then has an opportunity to go back and correct it, if the feedback is telling them they haven't passed, why would we say you don't have to pass it? Yeah, go ahead.
So Donna, I think the piece here that is important is that as long as the student is passing for the semester with their final average at 70 or above, so they're performing well quarter three and quarter four, we don't need to also have that must-pass assessment expectation. They've already been able to demonstrate to us that they've met expectations throughout their coursework.
And I, I agree, because meeting expectations is what's critical. So I'm going to just accept your expertise on this and say, it's good. I think you've done a great job of figuring out, but I think you were almost there before this pandemic happened anyway, so very good. Hats off to you guys. And it really is a nice opportunity for you to test out these alternative assessments in a way that is necessary right now. It's good. Thank you.
Thanks, Donna. Bill Day and then David Stahl.
Yes, I've been watching the governor's press conferences about every day and the last time she was on there with the Commission of Education, I think we would have a tough time if anyone challenged the way we're doing things now, because my feeling and understanding the way they were talking was that they were going to accept this type of promotion issue. And if we were to deny someone, I think we'd be in the commissioner's office there trying to justify why, because they were very open to what we're talking about right now, in my interpretation of her conversation a couple days ago.
Thanks, Bill. David Stahl.
Yeah, so I have a question here, but first I just want to make a comment. I was in preparation for this conversation, reading what some school districts all over the country are doing for this, for grading. And I was hoping that because of our one-to-one and because of how well things are going, that we would be able to do something much more aggressive and much more specific, that was real grades, because I think we were in a better position to do that. So I love the whole policy from all the grade levels, and I have kids from first grade through 11th grade and across the board. I think the policy's really good. I really like it. I have no objections to any of it. So thank you for that. The question I wanted to ask is, was kind of a follow-up to what Bill just mentioned. The state wanted us to provide virtual instruction plans when we first switched over to this. Has the state asked for or given any requirements for districts to provide grading policies?
Jane.
I realize as the host of the meeting, I can't raise my hand on the participants, so thank you for recognizing me. No, they have not. They have not asked us to submit anything. It was actually part of our initial plan, where we did put in information about grading. However, those plans continue to be revised as new guidance comes out and as circumstances change, and they have not asked us to resubmit or to submit any specific plan related to grading. And they did provide guidelines, but they also recognized in those guidelines that each district will continue to implement their policies that are in the best interest of their schools and communities. So they did give some guidance, but it was not anything that was required.
And so in response to Bill, and to put my mind at ease, really, when they give the guidelines but then turn it over to the districts, we've created a policy, they really don't have any recourse to tell us we couldn't do it that way, because they provided some very general guidelines. So I think it's great.
Thanks, David. Lisa MacRusso. You're on mute.
Okay, so I have my video off here because I actually have a question from a member of the public that happens to live in my house.
Hi, this is Gabrielle MacRusso. I was wondering if, how the new grading policy would affect National Junior Honor Society?
So Gabrielle, I sort of wish you were on video so I could see you, because I haven't seen students that much lately, but it will not affect it at all because you will get a grade for fourth quarter, and if you're a seventh grader, you know, in the two-year program, and it'd just be part of your average. And as an eighth grader, I believe we average it in the first three quarters, because we have to do it by a certain date. So whatever the cutoff date is, that's what we will use. So if you're maintaining your grades, it should not be an issue. And then we did change how you can get your volunteer hours in due to going virtually. So I know something was sent to you with that, I believe Sues was saying that. And it involved, like, you could do things at home where you can help out with a younger sibling or, you know, bringing firewood or do leave, stuff like that, because we knew their volunteer hours were going to look different, because you weren't going to be able to get out to the community and do them. And then, you know, that we won't have our end-of-year ceremony like we normally do, because we just can't meet in groups that large yet, and that's, I do apologize for that, but we're just not in a position to have any kind of ceremony like that.
Okay, thank you.
Nice hearing from you.
Same thing at the high school in terms of what Mr. Zenian said. We are still, you know, following our typical grading practices, so there won't be an impact there for NHS.
Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Chambers, I see your hand up.
No, I forgot to put it down. No problem.
Okay. Any further discussion? Anyone? Okay, then I have a question for Donna Skavitch. I don't, showing my notes, who actually moved the motion or seconded it? Could you let me know? That did not happen, right?
Yes, it did happen. It did. Let me just look, wait a minute.
I just want to double-check.
Oh, maybe it did not happen for this. Let me go back.
I think that might have been my fault. I don't think I recommended approval. I apologize.
Yeah, no, you're right, and I don't have anybody yet.
That's what I thought. Jane, if you would not mind.
No, I'd like to recommend approval of the grading protocol to be used for distance learning.
So moved.
And I second it. Okay, who was the first one, please?
Craig.
Craig, thank you.
And Donna Chambers seconded it.
Thank you.
Normally, I open this up for discussion. Actually, I will have it open. Any further comments or questions on the protocol? Mr. Luzon.
First of all, I'm in favor of this. I really, I realize, given the circumstances, nothing is going to be perfect. I'm still concerned about Timmy. So with that being said, I got a feeling there's going to be a lot of Timmies, not just in Rhode Island, but across this country. And I got a feeling that the United States Department of Education is going to have to look at this situation and maybe, if we're not broke by then, put an investment in it. So I'm just predicting that when that time comes and if, we're going to have to make an investment to boost up all the little Timmies K through 12 in our district. So if there is any federal funding, please, let's not hesitate and get our fair share of the pie. So other than that, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. All right, Jane, any last words? Nope, great. Then I would like to move this motion to the vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? No abstentions, any recusals? Thank you. That makes it a unanimous vote in favor. The motion passes. Thank you all, and thank you all to the administration for walking us through this.
Thank you.
This brings us to consent agenda items. We have one.
Chair.
And, yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve the regular session minutes of April 14, 2020.
So move.
Thank you, Catherine. So we have a motion by Craig and second by Catherine to approve the regular session minutes of April 14. Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Abstaining? Thank you, Murat. We have one abstention. Is there any opposed? Any recusals? No, then it's all in favor except for one abstention, which is Murat. Thank you. This brings us to school committee requests for future agenda items or legal opinions. Anything from the school committee that we want to, I see you, George, thank you. So George Abbott and then David Stahl.
I got two and a half, basically. One, I'd like a legal opinion as to whether Chair Ho should be paying college tuitions while being in compliance with the Chair Ho Act. And two would be a budget summary, including costs and savings related to the pandemic and a list of stipends that are still being paid. And also, statement relating to the status of the proposed budget that hasn't been approved by the voters.
Okay, so let me go through this, so I make sure I understand this. So the legal opinion is, I'm sorry, you, on relation to whether or not we should be paying college tuition as part of the Chair Ho Act?
Yes, whether it's in compliance, whether we're.
Okay.
Ryan, that requires a vote?
Yep, I know. I just want to make sure I understand what that vote is. So it's the legal, and this is related to the CCRI thing, right?
It could be.
Okay. So, so let's address this now. So for the committee, those in favor of obtaining a legal opinion on whether or not providing college education is compliant with the Chair Ho Act, do I have that right, George?
Yeah, there has to be discussion, Ryan.
Yeah, I'm just making sure I understand what that motion would be. Right, so.
I'm asking for a legal.
Right, okay. So a legal opinion is, okay, I just want to make sure I get it right, George. All right, so with respect to that, I am opening it up to discussion to the committee. I know, David, you had your hand up. Is that, that's for a separate item, correct?
That is for a separate item, although I just want to clarify, is George asking about the CCRI tuition issue specifically?
It would apply to all tuitions.
Okay, right.
Ryan, I have a concern about discussion taken place during this. A lot of discussion.
Let me think that through. That's correct.
It becomes an item if we.
Yeah, no, you're right. I'm sorry. Thanks, Donna. I appreciate that. Okay, so we're going to just do a vote on whether or not the committee wants to legal, to authorize a legal opinion on whether or not college tuition is compliant with the Chair Ho Act. With respect to the committee, those in favor of obtaining a legal opinion? I'm sorry, let me go through this. Let's do, I got Craig in favor, Craig Luzon in favor, David Stahl in favor, Donna Chambers, Bill Day, Murat Demov, George Abbott. Any other in favors?
Clay.
I'm sorry. Clay Johnson and, okay, Clay Johnson and Ryan Callahan. Sorry, I should have had my hand up as well. have had my hand up as well. Any other in favors? Do you have all that, Donna?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Great. Those opposed? I see Catherine, Lisa, and Linda Lyle. Any other opposition?
Can I?
Is anyone?
Sorry.
Any abstention?
I don't have Linda Lyle's.
Yeah, that's, my notes showed as well.
I'm going to abstain because of my lack of understanding of the issue. So I don't feel I can vote on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huster. So we got it, George. So for the, Donna, does that account for everybody?
That accounts for everybody. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Eight in favor, eight in favor, three opposed, one abstention.
Thank you. So we're in favor. It's moving forward. Thank you. Now, George, you had a second one, which was a request for a budget impact.
Budget summary, including costs and savings related to the pandemic, and a list of stipends that are still being paid. And also the status of the proposed budget that hasn't been approved by the voters.
Okay.
To get reports on them from whomever.
Yep, understood. Donna, did you get all that? Is there anything you want clarification on?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. David.
Yeah, I'd like to have a discussion at our next meeting on the agenda of high school English, English language arts curriculum.
English language arts curriculum. An open discussion on it or anything specific?
There's a particular piece of literature that they're studying in the eleventh grade English Language Arts, "A Streetcar Named Desire," that I'd like to see removed from our curriculum.
Well, this is going to be an interesting meeting.
Hey. I'm here for the fun.
Jane, you had your hand up?
Well, just that we do have a policy on that and a process. So I can talk with Mr. Stoll about the next step in that process. There's actually a form that he can complete if he'd like to have something removed from, request to have it removed from a curriculum. So we could, I could share that information in the meantime.
Okay, why don't you share that information? Then let's circle back, because I, you know, I think for a committee member to recommend something be put on the agenda.
We can, I can amend that to put the whole policy on the agenda. You can put it on the agenda any way you want. So I did meet with Craig McKenzie and the Humanities Specialist and the ELA Chair.
Yeah, I might need a policy then that you may want to consider.
So.
But you asked for a qualifier, so I put the specific.
Yeah, no, I, yep, nope. Well, perfect. We will have the ELA curriculum policy.
But I still would love to see that, Jane, and I would be happy to fill out the form as well, just from a parent perspective.
Yep.
Okay, so I have Lisa and then Craig. Lisa?
So my, the next thing I'm going to do right after I go up this meeting is order that book from Amazon, right? Because I don't like figure out what this is all about.
You can actually rent it on Amazon Prime and watch it tonight, so.
You haven't read it yet, Lisa?
Oh, I'll be reading it. So anyway, my item for agenda, I would like to have an open discussion with Jane, Craig, or Andrea Presley. Well, Jane will be there, but definitely Andrea or Craig as well, if not both, around how dual enrollment or concurrent enrollment, actually more dual, so the dual enrollment process through RIDE, how Charahoe can use that to support us post-pandemic or post-COVID, to actually support the students that are not what Craig is calling the Timmies, but the students who have not been able to excel during this period the way that they could have, and how we can use our local colleges to help supplement some of the work and the abilities and the curriculum that our students may want to be able to access. I've been researching it. It looks like it's mainly geared towards junior and seniors, and it also requires permission from key high school personnel. And so I just want to have a general conversation about how that looks, how we can use that for our students, how we can help them access accelerated materials so that we can help our teachers. And it has, it was going to always be an item prior to George's item anyway, so you may find a way to combine those into one larger discussion. That's fine, too. As long as on the agenda, we're able to openly discuss dual enrollment and college students as low as ninth grade attending the three state universities.
Understood. Thank you. Perfect. So dual enrollment there. Mr. Luzon.
Hey, John, I have seen you there the whole time. Nice seeing you. I just wanted to make one comment. I mean, we've, this is like the second, second or third time for me, but we had upwards of thirty-seven participants. Cool. That's, that's my only comment, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further requests for future agenda items or legal opinions? All right, well, let's all rush over to Amazon after this. With respect to that.
I have a couple of copies on my bookshelf.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Perfect. Motion to second. Craig and Catherine, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. All right, fantastic. It's unanimous. Thank you all so much. Appreciate it. Excellent discussion tonight. Stay safe. Take care.
Good night, everyone.
Night. Stay safe. Thank you.
All right. Bye, Jane.
Bye. Have a good night.
Take care, Bill.